How are you all doing today?
Good.
Alright, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, we recently worked with Hord Copeland-Mock to do a visioning plan for Eastern Shore Drive. And we've presented it publicly now three times. So I wanted to just give a brief overview of the presentations that we've done and then Will will run through the recommendations of this study and then we'll talk about kind of next steps. So, we first had a public presentation on April 4th and we held the meeting at Salisbury University, but we put out flyers and invited everyone along Eastern Shore Drive that has a business. We put it on the city's website. So, that was the first public presentation and we'll talk a little bit about their comments when we get into this. On April 23rd, we presented to the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Technical Advisory Committee. So this is planners and engineers and people in the transportation business from all over the Salisbury-Wycomico and actually Sussex County area. So it was very well received there. You know, this is the type of plan those folks can really get excited about because they see this in their jobs. And then last Tuesday, April 30th, we presented to Salisbury University at the Public Works and Safety Roundtable. So we've had three opportunities to get public feedback. So as I said, we'll talk about that a little bit more as we get into it. We do have this whole presentation posted on the city's website under Infrastructure and Development and then in the City Planning area, we posted the presentation there as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Will and then after he goes through the recommendations, we'll talk about some of the comments we've received.
Good afternoon. So we'll go through this, the first part relatively quickly. Our consultant that partnered with us on this was Hord Copeland-Mock, internationally-ranked urban development firm. A little bit on why we chose Eastern Shore Drive and we'll get into the rest. Obviously throughout the city and the country as a whole, there's a desire for complete streets and Eastern Shore Drive gave us, it was a very underutilized development opportunity and we had the ability to do it because it's so wide and a very, a manner that was not very disruptive. We could, it wouldn't be as disruptive as like say Main Street. Benefits of like a public space, we can offer balanced mobility there which we don't have now. It's almost completely devoted to cars with some sidewalks on the side and really include some public places and health benefits in there. It's a Eastern Shore Drive in context, it's about a mile, it's roughly 1.1 miles from Carroll Avenue to College. It's 60 feet and it's actually a 90-foot right-of-way, the presentation says 80 but it's 90. It's relatively flat, not a whole lot of view problems and it's primarily non-residential strip mall style development. Here on this page you can see, to orient you, north is actually to the right, it's sideways. You can see Route 13 running through there, dead middle of the screen and just to the bottom of that is Eastern Shore Drive. Here, I apologize, the laser pointer doesn't work on the screen too well, but you can see the park and then the big bold green line running through the middle of the screen is actually the rail trail, potential proposed rail trail and you see Eastern Shore Drive there in yellow, you know, a block and a half or so east of it. Here, again, Eastern Shore Drive with major circulation observations of how traffic flows through there with the lights at College, South Vine and then the stop signs at Carroll. Precincts, Hord Copeland-Mock, in order to build, a mile is such a long span to build a kind of uniform public space that they broke it into smaller segments so that each neighborhood could kind of have its own vibe if you will after redevelopment. So College Gateway, obviously very college oriented. Currently it's relatively suburban retail, strip mall development. Opportunities, there's a lot of room for college development in that area to fill in parking lots. You've got the dresser lot amongst other things, pocket parks which are always attractive to college students for studying and what have you. South and Shore, this is the area that runs roughly from the back of where, it's called College Center, that shopping center where Planet Fitness is, all the way up through South Boulevard up to almost South Division. It's still the old school city block network, more light industrial, a lot of vacant and large properties such as the parking lots that are used, think the backside of the Goliath Shopping Center, et cetera. It's mixed, the opportunities there, we could redevelop a lot of those parking lots, mixed use because they're not in use currently. And then South and Eastern Shore is a very visible intersection for future development. What Hord Copeland-Mock has branded, De Moa, which is the intersection Division, Monroe slash Prince and Washington. A lot of mixed land uses there. It's an old neighborhood, it predates the rest of presence Princeton by decades. It's a pre-World War II neighborhood. So they'll be able, a lot of irregular shapes, small properties, got a lot of quirkiness to it and they wanted to play to that. And then of course Carroll Gateway, which is at this time dominated by both Evo and then PRMC. So it's very institutional, large lots, connected to downtown, there's room there. Getting to the meat of the vision plan. Essentially the idea here is to turn Eastern Shore Drive into a mixed-use promenade. So you'd have a 38-foot promenade running down the middle of Eastern Shore Drive with 11-foot travel path for cars on each side, one north, one south. And then we can use this lot, this lot is this new open green space for stormwater management which would take off some of the stormwater issues we're having in that area during severe storms and then obviously create new public space.
One second, I forgot to call Jack.
I was going to tell you that, but I was like...
Alright. We're on the, the Eastern Shore Drive catchphrase plan.
Elements, again, like we said, we'd have a usable median, there'd now be a safe bike and pedestrian way in the middle. So out of that 38-foot median, we could have a rambling 10-foot, pedestrian, 12-foot pedestrian path. Lots of room to now address rainwater issues, can be treated and held in the median, keeping it all out of the river. Currently, all stormwater dumps into a 60-inch reinforced concrete pipe and dumped straight out to Beagle and Ron immediately behind Burnett White. And then of course landscape enhancements of which that quarter doesn't have many. Couple precedents for this, this isn't unheard of. What you're seeing here is Commonwealth Avenue in Boston. It's a much larger promenade. I believe it's like 150 feet across with two lanes on each side, but it handles a much larger volume of people and traffic. But you see obviously a wide pedestrian promenade right down the middle with pedestrian bikeways surrounded by benches, large legacy trees and then statuaries throughout. This one is Allen Street Bikeway in New York. It is very recent and it's actually smaller in width than what Eastern Shore Drive is. While the right-of-way is larger, the actual promenade in the middle can be down as low as 15 to 20 feet sometimes. So Eastern Shore Drive would actually be larger than this.
I've seen that, it's nice.
I've been on it.
It's very nice. Indianapolis Cultural Trail is actually kind of the first of these in the US. In some places they have the traditional bike model where they're on both sides of the street, but a lot of places where the right-of-way was narrow, they went to the middle or when they needed a median, they went into the middle to be able to slam everything in. And in a lot of places, this is narrow as 15 feet. So again, it's less than half of what we're proposing, perfectly safe, works every day. This is a big one for us, this is Baton Rouge, Louisiana, North Boulevard Promenade. Our city planner, Anne Roan, actually remembers this when she was growing up and it was not in a nice neighborhood. It has, was built later on. They had a lot of homelessness problems and development problems and property, property value stability problems. They built this about five or six years ago, or they completed about five, six years ago and the neighborhood has completely turned around. So lots of new development, new housing going up, homelessness has essentially disappeared in that neighborhood and they, it's again, it's about our width, I think it's like 40 feet wide. So precedents, I won't bore you with charts, but if you'll see what's circled up here, Eastern Shore Drive's at the bottom with the precedents above. And the point is to show us that Eastern Shore Drive currently has no median at all and a cartway to right-of-way ratio, meaning space dedicated to cars versus the over width of the right-of-way is about 75%. So it's almost entirely dedicated to through traffic, of which it carries very little. Eastern Shore Drive as proposed would be in sync with the model that we've seen above. Getting to the meat, the pictures of what you guys want to see, what it would look like in long run. 38-foot median tree line running down the middle, you've got Carroll on the right of the screen and then College Avenue on the left. By section, so you have College Gateway. Be able to handle the traffic there and the increased pedestrian volumes. We, the Hord Copeland-Mock and we are recommending a roundabout there. Be able to handle the through traffic on College and also calm the through traffic on College with all the other pedestrian connections in that area as well. And then it goes into the median and then runs up, continues to run north there. A cutaway view so you can get kind of a bird's eye view. You see new pedestrian lawn, again, heading, that's looking north from the roundabout. South and Shore, tie the median there, the promenade into the bike lanes that are proposed for South Boulevard, connect into the promenade there moving again north. A lot of those houses that you actually see in the bottom of that imagery there are gone now. So there's a, there's a infill development opportunity there. And you'll notice that a lot of these intersections, Hord Copeland-Mock has moved the bike path to one side or the other and has to accommodate potential turn lanes. If we build a median, obviously more traffic's going to go to key intersections and if those volumes warrant a turn lane, they've left themselves room in the engineering process to cut that in. Again, the same intersection looking north, South and Shore. This is what they're calling De Moa Green, this is essentially right next to Harris Market. This is a quirky South Division intersection where Prince and Division come into Eastern Shore Drive. They've created a space where potentially, it's a public plaza but where Harris Market during events could maybe spill out some of their farmer markets goods and reach the community for events on the plaza, on the promenade plaza there and then introduce some green space right there where people might be able to buy something at Harris Market and then, or any of those businesses around, Cakes by David is right around the corner and then sit on that green there. Same area from bird's eye view. And you'll notice the tree line median on each side, so lots of new trees. I think it counted, it was like almost 200 trees were proposed. And then coming into Carroll Street, there's two options for this intersection. The roundabout would do a lot to calm traffic and solve a lot of issues there. I think it's kind of our preferred option, but reality is right at the top of that screen you have the rail trail, or the railroad and then 13. So getting that to work with that light of 13 might be difficult to say the least. So as such, they've given us two options, you know, a two-turn bay, standard T-intersection, signalized or unsignalized, that would be able to accommodate it as it is. And here we are.
So the main comments that we got at the first public meeting was first and foremost concern during construction, is the property owners know that construction's going to be disruptive and so what would that do to their businesses? Then we also talked a lot and got a lot of comments about can this road accommodate the traffic and are people not going to drive on the road anymore? And Will didn't touch on it in this presentation, but we've done traffic counts and the road is well overdesigned, if you know you know the numbers.
Yeah, so Eastern Shore Drive is a five-lane, four, two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane, two-way left turn lane, is approximately designed to handle about 30,000 to 40,000 cars a day. We've had two studies done in the recent past, in 2016, the MPO actually did a study of the whole corridor and found that it mostly carried like 9,200 cars a day. Our more recent study is showing about 67. So it's actually dropped in three to four years. So it's way overdesigned, way over, or way under capacity for what it was designed for. It's a lot of wasted pavement we're maintaining and impervious surface that's flushing into the river for no reason.
Do you know off the top of your head the capacity, one lane in either direction?
Yeah, so one lane in either direction gives you, it can handle about 15,000 cars a day. If we put in turn lanes, it can handle up to 28,000 cars a day. So we're nowhere near that threshold.
So we're still well under, you know, what they're seeing now. So Will met with some of the property owners after that meeting and really tried to address their concerns and we are in very early stages. So this is where we're looking for this type of feedback. The Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee loved the center lane bike lane. That's, it's new, they're seeing it more happening. One of the planners from Sussex County said, "I've been trying to get one of these, this will help me so much, you know, can I get a copy of the presentation?" So that is what's very new in the industry and for very safe pedestrian and bike traffic. And then Salisbury University was also very supportive. You know, they're looking at, then how could they connect further to the south and make sure there's that good connection down to their east campus? Anything else? Any questions?
I guess maybe the big question here is how much?
How are we going to pay for this? Yes. So Hord Copeland-Mock is working with us on preparing some budget estimates, but we feel like the way we're going to pay for this is with a multitude of grants. So Will has already talked to a few different agencies from DNR about trees, we would look for grants for stormwater, this is a major stormwater project. Maryland Bike Ways, Transportation Alternatives Program or TAP for the street reconfiguration. So I think probably some mix of four or five different grants.
And we save a lot of money by using the median because by not moving the existing exterior curb lines, that actually saves off over that length probably well over a million dollars because we don't have to move the stormwater pipes, nothing's getting cut up, other than what we're raising, so.
Does any of that, how is, how is that stormwater there and all the other infrastructure?
So, so right now, I mean, it's a traditional street that's crowned in the middle and it just goes to inlets on the side with storm drain pipes. So what we would be looking to do is essentially drain to the, to the center, would have some bioretention areas or stormwater features that would then overflow out to those pipes on the side. So as Will said, we would leave the curb line as is for the most part except for, you know, major changes like if we do roundabouts and then try to just accommodate with the existing infrastructure. So that we would not be looking at at this point any utility work, the utilities are in good shape. So, so we are in this very preliminary stage right now. We'll start to apply for grants for design and to help us fund the project and then just kind of keep going in small increments. Again, this is part of the Bicycle Master Plan but not to this full extent, so you know, we were conscious of what we had targeted to spend in that.
This is something we could do, again, in phases?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
So back instead of kind of do all the...
Yes.
And here, one thing I'd add is just that, you know, to put in context, the whole reason this is happening is just that we have an opportunity to do Eastern Shore Drive per the Bike Way Master Plan, you know, it's a priority, we ought to do it, it's overdesigned, it's over-engineered, but if we just do it, you know, with striping, you're not going to have protected lanes, you're still going to have all that wasted space, you're still going to have all that extra asphalt, you know, and so much more can be gained. So sure, there'd be a cost and maybe that's a couple hundred thousand dollars to the plan as it is. The Bike Way Master Plan spells out with an estimate. And then it's that delta, it's that what extra would come from doing it this way, that's what we'd go after.
Well, I think this does, you know, it does, everything you guys are saying is going to do, but I think it's going to significantly increase the property value through that whole area.
It's, it's a wasteland. I mean, it's this huge expanse of asphalt that is placeless, it's not special.
I mean, if you come home to what it looks like now, but then you come home to something that's every day that's beautiful.
Beautiful, safe.
There's, there's nice, you know, there's nice buildings and there's nice businesses and they've got this kind of terrible street in front of them.
And it gives people something to want to come home to and it gives, the businesses tend to grow from this, so.
I do.
I think it's wonderful.
I do have a question or, or I don't know if it has been brought up at any other presentation. What were the thoughts of, I see right in the middle there you have, it goes right to the end or backs up to the homeless, um...
Halo.
...facility. So, um, I'm wondering, because that's a huge parking lot that is also underutilized and possibly, what were the thoughts with that facility there? Would that be, did anybody from Halo have comments or?
I don't think anyone came.
They never attended, yeah.
No, they were invited but didn't come. So we didn't have Hord Copeland-Mock reach out to them specifically, but we can follow back up with them and just see what comments they had because certainly I think there's a huge potential to do something where that parking lot is, whether it's Halo does it or if they sell it or, you know, subdivided, I think that would be a prime frontage on this new road for, for some other business.
Jack, do you have any questions, thoughts?
No, I have my question answered at the first.
Oh, okay.
Very good.
Good.
To that point though, you know, if you look, I think Will or Amanda, one of you mentioned that there's a couple lots there that are grass lots that at times have had a real estate license, a sign and have been listed. I mean, there's, there's obviously some development opportunity and that frontage could end up being either an asset to Halo that they sell off for development that gives them some capital to...
Near and familiar, right?
Yeah, or, you know, or, you know.
They don't own it.
They could generously be offered to support Halo. Or, or it could be, you know, it could be an extension or a reason for, you know, lighthouse.
It could be an encouragement for the others to...
The Lighthouse in Annapolis is a homeless person-run restaurant, you know, you could have an actual storefront business that faces there that supports the homeless community. There's a lot of good that could come from without displacing.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Absolutely. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Concept looks great.
Looks fantastic, well done.
Thank you. I was taking the first time.
Well done.
Next up is Bill Holland.
Good afternoon.
How are you, Bill?
The Department of Infrastructure Development recently received another petition for annexation. This is a, it's going to be a small one, it's only one parcel, one lot that's located on the Westley side of Shoemaker Lane. It's northernly, a property line is, that abuts the city corporate line. This, this request does not contain a concept development plan because as you'll see in the package that I gave you, it's going to become portions of lots 37, 38, and 39 in the Greystone subdivision which has preliminary planning approval, but until this lot can get annexed in and become part of these lots, sort of waiting for to get the final approval. And it's approximately a half acre site and the next, the next step would be taken to the planning commission to get it zoned with the existing property that it's contiguous to and work up an annexation agreement, that should be it. I'm just requesting your approval to move this forward and get this one going.
Do you have the, the concept development plan? Does your office have a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes.
There would be, yeah, they have a preliminary approval plan, yeah.
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. Can I just ask a question? Do we know where the parcel that is not annexed sits in terms of the design? Is it like a street, house? In terms of the proposed plan?
It looks like it's...
It's at the back end.
Yeah.
It'd be at the Westley end of the development, it'd be the last like parcels in that particular...
Yeah, it looks like the plan for one lot is only partially in, so it's like cleaning that up.
Got you. Just curious.
Anybody good with that?
I'm fine.
Alright. Sir?
Alright.
Sorry. Next up is the resolution to approve a service and equipment lease between the city and the Wycomico County Board of Elections.
Hello. What you see is the lease. We have a lease with the Board of Elections each election and it outlines the responsibilities and duties of them and us. We lease their equipment, their voting units, poll sticks, memory sticks, poll books. It also outlines what we pay them to compensate their employees who work and we do have a budget received from them, so, but that's not in this because it can be a little more or a little less, but this is very much like what we approve every four years now, used to be every two years and Mark has reviewed the lease. Any questions? Do you want me to read through it or?
I think it's, for me, it's fairly self-explanatory. So I'm good with it. Jack, you good? Everybody else good?
I'm good.
Okay. Is it okay to put this on the consent or would you like it on the regular agenda?
I think this is fine for consent.
Consent, okay.
Next up is Mr. Tillman. Lot 16, surplus and assignment.
This was put, one of the properties that was put out for bid some time ago and the lot, parking lot itself was surplus, but in the original plan, the city had, was planning on keeping that area that with the hatch marks, it's these sort of, you go back away from the water to get up over the bridge and the guy who was the winning bid really needed a piece of that hatch area in order to construct a building on the property and he has agreed to pay the cost to, you know, fix the access to the bridge directly from the Riverwalk. And it's supposed to be ADA compliant, is my understanding. Amanda has apparently approved that, I haven't been part of that plan. And, but this just needed to be, this little piece wasn't surplus and I don't think, it's nothing that has to go out for bid because by itself, it's really a valueless piece of property.
Got you.
Sort of just a swap with a neighboring parcel so that it can develop.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Jack, you good?
I've got a question. The footbridge, any potential issues with the footbridge going into that property or going, missing at that property from the control point of view?
My understanding is that Amanda is, has approved a plan that the footbridge will tie in directly with the Riverwalk as it will be after we make this contribution to them. I haven't seen the plans yet, but I don't, I don't know, my understanding is, is that it was doable and they've agreed to do it. If you want to, we can probably have somebody, whatever he's provided, we can get that for you.
Did you hear what Mark said?
I heard him say, "Did you..."
He's coming in.
When we first, this issue first arose, we requested that, you know, whatever needed to be done to protect the footbridge and access to the footbridge would be done. And my understanding is he's presented something to Amanda which is suitable that will be ADA compliant and tie that footbridge right into what will now be the Riverwalk that'll run directly along the river. So now the Riverwalk won't depart from the river but will be right there and this guy is supposed to pay that cost.
Okay. Is there, is there a way that we can get a copy of what that's going to look like, what their plan is to do?
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, but I'll talk to Amanda about it and obviously we can get that for you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Alright, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, is everybody good with this pending on seeing, uh, whatever concept plan they have?
Yes.
See, next up, Mr. Tillman again.
I would, this, I think this is the one where, that I talked about in the last budget, um, in the meeting that I was invited to, and this is, this is the same document that we discussed at that time, that Keith has attached, and that this is our estimate of, uh, of what the shortfall would be currently, and in the past, you know, if necessary, um, you know, we can, you know, draw back on some of the things we're doing, we won't, won't start filing motions against people that would, you know, create work this year, but I think that, uh, that we, we, it looks like we're, we're settling another one of the lawsuits based on my meeting recently, so, uh, I, I think, I think that this is a doable one.
And is that, that's where most of this came from?
Yeah, it's, it's a whole, a, a lot of it came from the company number one suit, um, with, eh, and I think I quoted, that was like, um, seventy thousand dollars so far over the last several years that that's cost, um, but, uh, that's not really a shocking number.
Yeah.
Considering what has transpired in that case, but, um, you know, hopefully we can resolve that in the coming year.
I hope so. Any questions, Jack?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't hear, no, I couldn't hear.
I asked him, I, he said, uh, a portion of this was, uh, a good portion of this was from the, uh, fire sta- the Station One lawsuit.
Do we know what that number is approximately so far?
Actually, I had that at the last, I had that at the last budget session, but I think it's, um, somewhere around, um, close to seventy thousand dollars, um, that it's cost thus far. Uh, we, we also have been able this year to settle a number of the cases that were part of this yearly cost, um, and I'm looking forward to our, hopeful at least, that we'll resolve another one that's currently pending as well.
He said he's not gonna file any more motions right now.
Don't tell the other lawyers that.
Or maybe he is, Jack, I don't know. Everybody okay with this? That took care of that, miss.
No.
Anything else for the good of the order? Miss Glavine, yes? Okay, all right, with that, everybody enjoy the rest of your evening.
Okay.
For adjourn.